Welcome to the Thursday, July 25th, 2024, meeting of the Lakeville Planning Board. It is 7:02 and we're meeting at the Lakeville Police Station. We have LakeCam recording. Is anyone else recording? No one else here to record. On our agenda for item number one, we have a public hearing, site plan review, 43 Main Street, which has been continued to tonight. And we have a letter from the applicant's attorney asking to continue to the second meeting in August. So that would be August 22nd, 2024. And seeing as this is a last-minute continuance and no one really showed up for this public hearing, I think the police station should suffice for that location.
Yeah.
We already have it scheduled.
Mm-hmm.
So does somebody want to make the motion to continue?
Make the motion, we continue. LakeCam for 43 Main Street.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agenda item number two, public hearing, site plan review, 43 Main Street, which has been continued to tonight. And actually, if I should back up and just specify, the first item was for the 120 units of assisted living and memory care and 70 units of the independent living with associated site improvements. Agenda item two is for the 55-plus age-qualified cottage home development, which includes 68 units. So this item has also been requested to continue to the second meeting in August, which is August 22nd. Would somebody like to make a motion to continue this?
I make a motion to continue 43 Main Street for the age-qualified development of 55-plus, 68 units to the August 22nd, 2024 meeting.
All right, motion?
Second.
The second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Item number three is 5 Harding Street. Review and approve peer review proposal, possible vote. So we have two proposals. One is from Beals &amp; Thomas and the other one is from Environmental Partners. This is basically to do the review on behalf of the town. We did get an email from the applicant stating that he had worked with Beals &amp; Thomas in the past and he was basically requesting Beals &amp; Thomas. But I'd like to just, you know, as a reminder to this board, this is peer review for the town. It's not their, the applicant's choosing. It's our choosing.
Okay.
Even though they pay for the service, it's the town's peer review. So really, you know, we should be making sure it's the best option for the town. And I did ask Kathy to just reach out and find out what kind of capacity the applicant had worked with Beals &amp; Thomas, just out of curiosity, to see if there was some sort of relationship. And the response was that he was a subcontractor and performed site work on a project that they designed. They had no contractual relationship as they worked for the owner, but they found the company to be diligent and professional. So just keeping that in mind when we...
The town has never used Beals &amp; Thomas before.
So we did, so I'm much more familiar with Environmental Partners.
Yeah.
But we did use Beals &amp; Thomas for the Pinecrest Village that we did recently receive back. I don't know if you've had a chance to review it.
Yeah, they were pretty thorough in their examination.
They're thorough, they're capable. I will say personally, I do still, I kind of favor Environmental Partners because of working with them with, you know, the past hospital project was, you know, so intense. And, you know, Scott Turner was really good. And I mean, he showed up to Zoom meetings with COVID, you know, sitting there on the Zoom, you know, doing a good job despite all that. So either one, I think, is, is good.
I mean, I went through the Beals &amp; Thomas, thought that was fairly thorough. For what little I know about all this, it seemed to be right down the mark. Same with, I went through the Environmental Partners as well. They were very thorough.
Yeah, I mean, I would agree. I mean, both are pretty comparable, other than the price, which is really not a ton of difference. The, under the services, you know, the excluded services are traffic studies, that kind of thing, given the fact that, you know, the proposed plan for those buildings and the traffic that's going to be generated in there. I mean, you're going to have some morning traffic of the people that are coming onto that campus and the trucks leaving and then coming back at the end of the day. It did not seem like there was going to be a large amount. So I mean, I'm okay with waiving traffic. The only thing that came to mind with this that we, this board might want to consider is the review of the landscape design, especially for the members on Cross Street, I believe.
Although I think Environmental Partners did specify something about the buffer.
I might have missed that, sorry.
No. Let me just see, scope of services. Dimensional, okay. Oh, okay, so no, actually, the landscape design is on exclude Newburg, Beals &amp; Thomas, one of them.
Yeah.
Did have.
So under assumptions and exclusions for Environmental Partners, they did say, I believe, assumptions and exclusions is performing a review of the landscape design.
Yep, and actually, so it's Beals &amp; Thomas. It's under scope of services 1.2. They do have buffers to abutting residential property. So it does include it, yeah.
So since, so I did take a drive-by. Actually, Jack and I both took a drive-by to take a look at that particular property just to kind of see what we've been looking at in the general area. And I mean, there is, there is a buffer, but in terms of the resident that was here, they had mentioned that, you know, you can still kind of see through the trees. They had some concerns about where the septic was placed and where that hill would be and the surrounding greenery around that. So I don't know if that just needs to be looked at just to make sure that any of butters are...
Yeah, but Dan, that was kind of a stretch though, as far as, because there was a lot of foliage back there.
Well, I'm sure we could send a comment to them, just, you know, we've got concerns from...
We did, right.
...about it and give the address, maybe?
Yeah, and just to kind of have them evaluate it.
Okay.
As, as just to make sure.
Yeah, I mean, once again, I don't know that much about any of this stuff, but just the amount of vegetation and foliage and trees and everything.
Yeah.
I think the guy is...
It appeared when we did the, just the exterior visit from Cross Street and also on property of Harding, that it, it, there was a pretty good buffer of pine trees and, you know,
Oak trees and shrubbery.
But the last, the resident that was abutting had mentioned something about, you know, with the vegetation recently coming down, that, you know, there was some...
Yeah, but is, all the vegetation was down, right? That's pretty well...
It's down, yeah. Yeah, I, it's just, I guess it's where that berm is on the edge of the property.
Right, because they were asking if there could be plantings on, I think, the septic.
Yeah, and I don't, I think it was one of the raised septics. I can't recall. But anyways, other than that, I mean, I thought that both looked pretty good.
Yeah, I mean, I really don't think they're going to have a big, I don't think any of the butters would have a big issue. We want to put plantings on the top of the berm, fine, but other than that, I don't think there's a...
Well, so right here, though, it's just, you know, which peer review do you think you'd rather see? Would you rather Environmental Partners or the Beals &amp; Thomas?
Just by virtue of the in-depth analysis that Environmental Partners went to, I'd go with them. But you guys know better than I do because you guys are probably...
I mean, if we went with them, we could just ask them to include...
If...
Those.
Yeah.
If price is an issue, then okay, then...
I mean, I don't think we should worry about the price because it is, it's comparable. It's a difference of $900.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, I mean, I, you know...
Yeah, I mean, I would agree.
If you think that they're more thorough, I...
Michelle, you're more familiar with these people than I am.
Like, I do, I do favor Environmental Partners. I do think that they do an excellent job.
Then I'd do that. I mean, Dan, unless you think otherwise.
I, I think it's fine as long as, you know, the, they take into account just that minor thing for that resident.
Well, I think we make, how do, can we communicate that to them? How do we do that or not?
So Kathy, we could basically let them know that we're accepting their proposal, but asking them to include...
So is it excluded?
So they're excluding landscape design, but what we're really looking for is that buffer to the residence.
Yeah.
Was it 44?
There's sufficient buffering to the butters.
Right.
Was it 44 Cross?
I'm looking it up right now, my...
43 Cross.
43 Cross Street.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So typically, again, I play newest board member here. When we have a small, slight change to the provision, I mean, can we still make a motion to vote on this or do they have to come back with the revision before we can vote on it for the study?
Well, as long as we're going with Environmental Partners, I think we can just ask them to include that and then whatever it is, whatever that brings it to.
That's for me. Okay.
So...
So you want me to make a motion?
Yeah.
Um, I'd like to make a motion that we vote to have Environmental Partners do the peer engineering service for 5 Harding Street to the minor plan change.
With that inclusion?
With the inclusion of the landscape review for, what was it?
For the buffer.
Landscape buffer for 43 Cross Street?
43.
Okay.
Yes. All right, we have a motion.
A second.
And a second.
Michelle, I have a question. This is a peer review from Beals, but this is a letter of agreement for professional engineering services at this, they're considered the same thing?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah. Yep, they're, so it's just different wording.
Yep, okay, okay.
But they're offering the same.
Once again, not familiar with some of the terminology.
Okay, so we have a motion.
A second.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agenda item number four, 43 Main Street, review and approve peer review proposal, possible vote. So once again, we have the peer review proposal. This is just the Environmental Partners one. It gives the scope of services as well as the total. Was there anything that you thought should be included? They didn't cover, does it look good?
There was something...
Trip generation and trip distribution methodology, is that the residents coming and going? Is that what that means on page three?
Number nine?
Yep.
Well, it's eight and nine. Is that what that means?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, if you remember from the last time, they'll take the existing, they'll do the no build, they'll do the build-out, and then they'll do the comparisons and they'll say what that is.
Yep. Number 13, I had circled when reviewing this with particular attention to emergency vehicle access onsite circulation. So I had mentioned this to the board prior that some of my concerns with ensuring on this estate is that for emergency access, that there was enough. If there could be a dedicated road that either goes on the, you know, the edge of the property that kind of connects to the three properties, so in case there is some sort of emergency, depending on, let's say, I don't know, there's a fire at one of the residences, that they're able to get there in the quickest means possible, depending on what end of town they're coming from, whether it be 105 or 79 Rhode Island Road. That's what I'd be kind of looking for, making sure that something would be in place for that, since these will be technically not connected properties. There'll be three separate entrances. So I'd like to hear what they have to say on that.
So maybe just under that number 13, question of whether they recommend...
Recommendations on emergency vehicle access points, given that it's, there's three separate entrances. Connectivity, yep.
Michelle, I have a question on 14.
Sure.
Accessible spaces and accessible access routes. It's implied it's handicapped.
Correct.
Is that what that means?
Yeah.
Okay.
So making it, making sure that ADA compliance?
Yeah, the sufficient number of aid spaces are available.
Exes.
Roots.
Uh, there was...
So they are excluding landscape.
I noticed that.
And noise.
Mm-hmm. So... And based on the plans that Wingate had, those were pretty impressive.
Yeah, and I wouldn't think noise is going to be a big issue, is it?
And it doesn't include the wastewater because it...
Wastewater.
It said it was going to be prepared by another.
That's DEP, right? Wastewater.
Gosh, I'm trying to think. I think we still had them do the wastewater peer review.
Right. Because that, oh gosh.
No, they did a, no, back then, because it was a warehouse.
Oh, back then.
They did have to do.
Yeah.
See, I believe it was for health and the septic. That was what it was.
So weren't, wouldn't three and four be handled by Rhino? I mean, that was part of their whole deal, that they would clean out that whole, you know, dump site.
Right.
Therefore, that would, and as a result thereof, ensure that the wetlands and the wastewater would be...
Well, so the wetlands, that would be Concom. Don't, Concom will make sure that they get the peer review done for the wetlands.
Okay.
And I think the only wetlands on that site, it's not towards the front, it's going to be towards the back.
Back, right.
Yeah.
Right.
So this is for... See, this, this peer review is for Wingate and Fox Estates, correct? But over on assumptions and exclusions, review the site plans for Cranberry Heights, which is correct. We don't want them looking at, that's a completely different...
Right.
Right, yeah, because if they do go with the 4B, that's not even going through us.
Yeah, so we don't want them, we're just focused on this.
So noise studies, I'm kind of jumping back and forth here, but the noise study, so that would include the entire property. So it would be the 105 side, the 79 side, the butters which go up Rush Pond, right?
You mean, the whole development or just those two?
Well, I think, I think honestly, so now, remember the way that the site is, those 55-plus cottages are what kind of a butt?
It's okay. It's Thursday.
Welcome to my world.
Yeah, yeah.
You have no idea.
Rush Pond Road.
Rush Pond Road, yeah, yeah, Rush Pond.
So I don't think any of like, you know, the trucks coming and going.
Well, there can't be that many in this development, right? Except deliveries of...
Well, that's what I'm saying. Like, you've got, there's three separate entrances now. So I mean, you're not going to have truck traffic in there. You're not going to have other than vehicular traffic for those residents.
Well, you get to like the ride buses.
Right, and we, so we wouldn't do any of that.
People coming to get a ride or...
The only thing is landscape architecture. I, I mean, I probably want to make sure that they have a review of the full site architecture, make sure that we're in compliance. I mean, based on the preliminary plans, I mean, it looks like they've got all things covered. But if there is anything that they would recommend on that sense, it is, you know, abutting somewhat of a residential area.
But I think the one, the last meeting they had, they were pretty, pretty extensive.
Yeah.
Well-thought-out landscaping programs. So I mean, I mean, if we say we wanted to make, they should look at what they propose and maintain that in, at the end, they did, they do what they said they were going to do.
Right, right.
Well, I mean, I guess it can't hurt to have them look at and make sure that the landscape that they put up is, is going to be durable and that they have a plan that's going to make sure it doesn't dry up like in front of, I know Barbara Mankowski used to love talking about Crooked Lane, those trees over there.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, those trees.
So maybe...
So I, I would...
Do we want to ask them to add landscape?
I would, just because it's going to be such a large development. You have, you know, the commercial buildings. There's also the, they're going to have the HVAC. I would assume they're also having backup generators and whatnot for the facilities. We want to make sure that, you know, that's all kind of covered and closed because you also have those apartment buildings.
Your HVAC would be up the roof, presumably. And the generators would be in the back, wouldn't they?
Potentially, but I think the HVAC was not on the roof for this proposal.
It is supposed to be screened.
I think it's screened, but I think it's in, like, on the ground in the back. That would just be my only recommendation on that. Oh, we were talking about stormwater. I mean, they've got a memorandum on supplemental stormwater, DHP.
We don't want the noise. We don't need the noise.
No, we don't need that.
I wouldn't think so. Not this kind of a development.
I mean, the other things that they're including, public transportation opportunities, crash data, obviously, traffic. That all is looking good. Yeah, I think that pretty much covers it.
All right, so we want to accept the peer review, but with those two additions of including review of the landscape and also for number 13 to just verify the emergency vehicle access connectivity within the site.
Right.
All right, so I make a motion that we approve 43 Main Street peer review with the conditions of the landscape design and making sure that that is part of the peer review. And for item number 13, which is to verify the emergency vehicle access for the site and its connectivity.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Budgets.
All right. Item number five, planning board budget discussion, possible vote. So at our last meeting, we had discussed the planning board needs as far as a consultant and the coordinator combined role. The one thing we didn't address was the budget line items for those items. So what we had previously sent to Bob Nunes was for the, when we had talked about doing the part-time coordinator, it was $35,000 and then the balance of the budget towards the consultant services. So in order to make that coordinator combined role work, it needs to be a little bit more in order to, you know, draw in quality experienced individuals for that role. What's that?
Who's going to manage it? Us, you, part-time?
No, 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 so that was what we had previously discussed. But then at our last meeting, we discussed a combined role instead, going with like a combined coordinator slash conservation agent, if the select board would consider that. So the $35,000 from the planning board budget would have to be a little bit more than that in order to give it a decent starting salary for this one combined role.
Right.
Which is still, you know, in my opinion, it seems still a benefit to the town instead of two hires, you know, if it's a combined role. You know, there's, that's better than having two. And so we're still just working with what had been there for the town planner role. So what I was thinking, so we had, we looked at the costs associated with the consultant and we know that Environmental Partners, I think their quote was, oh gosh, it was either 30 or 35,000. But, you know, we were hoping to go with the planner and attorney that are with Platinum Partners.
Out of Stoughton?
I don't have that with me. Is it Stoughton?
Yeah.
So if we were to cap the coordinator role at, say, 40,000 instead, then we could use additional money towards that coordinator combined role with the conservation agent.
And this would be part-time?
No, so it would be, it would be a full-time person, but it would be a split role, so the coordinator would help. with, you know, the various land use duties. Um, and then the agent would do the conservation agent duties, and I think, you know, having that background would help. My, cuz my concern is if we bring in a planner and if they're very much development-minded, like we saw, um, I, I just don't wanna see that happen again.
Who do they report to?
Um.
You?
It would, no, it would be under zoning enforcement.
Okay. You comfortable with that?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay.
So this person would, would also assist Kathy too, as well with some of the.
Well, I don't think we're seeing it as an overlap so much as.
Separate responsibilities and so forth.
Do we, you have much input into what they do? When they do it, how they do it, when they report?
Well, we would work closely with this part, you know, that, that role, if, if it's created, this is a recommendation that we're sending still. So. If we could change it to, so instead of the thirty-five thousand for the part-time, if we could change it to forty-nine, six oh four, up to that amount for the combined role. And then have a budget of forty thousand, up to forty thousand for the consultant services. Now, that would still allow us to use them for things like drafting um, bylaws and, and different.
Well, yeah, I mean, definitely for like, some of the legal questions that may come up with some of the site review and, you know, anything else that we might need them to basically supplement.
Yeah, and so instead of having, so you know how we have the, the applicant pay for peer review, instead of having them pay for a peer review, we could have them pay for the consultant and use that in place, you know, and see how that works too.
Do we have to put together a job description?
Um, no, not at this point.
Because in the select board, you're gonna say so.
So I mean, I did include it when I sent it to the select board, that, you know, we would like to be included in creating that job description from the hiring process, et cetera. So does that, how does that sound to you both?
Mind it may.
For the, for the numbers, yeah, the budget numbers?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I would just have to see the numbers, you know, um.
So this was what it happened.
Yep.
And so this is what.
About the differences, okay.
So this would be combined with what's available for the conservation to make it.
Okay.
It would be.
For Nancy.
Yeah, somewhere between, I think they could do a range of a salary between seventy-five to eighty-two thousand.
Okay.
I agree.
And this would be out of this budget year, that'd be proposed for fiscal year twenty-five, or is it?
So because it's already set aside in the budget, it already is in place for fiscal twenty-five.
Okay.
So um, really, it just needs to be, I believe, approved by the select board and. Fincom.
Okay.
Okay. How do we move that forward?
Uh, send off this recommendation, so I already sent off, you know, the, what we're, where our needs are. And this is just to follow up with the budget amounts.
So what do you have to do, a very letter to them?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll send it over as, as the email again, and just let them know that this is what we've discussed and believe is a fair amount.
Yeah.
Because, so the consultant, it would be our first year, it, it may not be that amount, you know, it may be less, so it's, it's one of those things, you, you just don't wanna take too much away from it and not have enough.
Right, right.
But at the same time.
Have enough.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. Okay.
So would you wanna make a motion for these numbers, do you have the numbers?
I, no, I don't, not for me.
Does that, does that work?
Yeah, what do you want us to say?
I mean.
Motion to approve the.
Seventy-five.
Planning board budget for.
Eighty-two.
Sixty-two thousand.
Or so, it's, it was like eighty-two, six oh four, I don't know what the exact amount from.
Okay.
Uh, like.
Uh, I make a motion to propose a role for, it, it was at Concom?
It was a con.
Concom slash.
Coordinator slash Concom, um, position um, to the uh, select board for uh, review and discussion.
You have to tell them.
The budget amounts.
With a budget amount uh, between seventy-five to eighty-two thousand.
And then the balance for the consultant of forty thousand?
Yeah, with the balance for um, a potential outside secondary consultant for forty thousand dollars.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We have a set of minutes for the May twenty-third, twenty twenty-four meeting. This was a long one, there was one thing.
I'd like to take you to put together this one, Kathy.
Is it super short?
What's that?
I said, what is it, super short?
Yeah, it is short. Seemed long.
Yeah, I didn't see any, when I reviewed, I didn't see any.
I mean, I went, I.
There was just one thing that I thought I wanted to just add for clarity.
Was that for five-harding?
Oh, okay, so under the open space residential development on page two, in that first paragraph, um, I said, I wanted to see more benefit to the town, every time new units are built, it pushes them farther away from subsidized housing inventory, which is didn't even work, so they could. Every time new units are built, it pushes the total housing inventory away?
Uh.
Just because when I read it, I was.
What does that mean?
And, and, and I knew what I meant, but if someone were to read it, I thought it might not make sense.
Doesn't make sense to me. One little I know, more house you build.
So.
Pushes the inventory away, what does that mean?
So in order for you to reach safe harbor, you're supposed to have ten percent of your total inventory of housing, ten percent of that has to be subsidized housing inventory. So whenever you're building market rate units, you're pushing you, your, your ten percent farther and farther away because you still need to add to that ten percent. So that was what I was referring to. So she wants to see more benefit, every time new, yes, new market rate units are built, it pushes safe harbor, yeah, further away?
But before, just as a, it'd be down the bunny trail, but if, as we go forward, we approve more housing, do we at that same time say, okay, so where does this?
So this was just from the.
With the?
This is just from the discussion that we had had on the OSRD. So when we were talking about the OSRD bylaw, um, that was just one, one thing that I brought up, that if, if there's no subsidized housing component to it, those units are just push, are just market rate units without any included subsidized units.
Okay, all right.
Every time new market rate units are built, it pushes.
Every time new market rate units are built, it pushes safe harbor further away from subsidized housing inventory.
Yeah, I got, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Safe harbor. Do you got that, Kathy? Kind of, no?
Wanna repeat that once more?
Okay, so every time new market rates, so just add market rate units are built, it pushes.
Safe harbor.
Safe harbor, instead of the word them.
Yeah, but them refers to the town. So it pushes the town further away from safe harbor.
Okay, yeah, and that's fine.
I can.
Safe harbor.
Pushes the town further away from safe harbor, okay.
And I know that's probably how I said it, it just, like I said, reading it, it won't make sense, even though I know what I meant. All right, anyone else, it all looks good besides that?
Everything else is good.
All right, so do we wanna make a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve, make a motion, we approve the planning board meeting minutes of May twenty-third.
Second.
All right, with that memory vision, we have a motion in a second?
All in favor?
In favor?
All right.
Moving along, Jack, huh?
I know.
All right, old business, rules and regulations administrative update, Kathy has some information for us.
So I just got to the fees, but I kinda tried to pull everything together so you could see, it was the minutes from that meeting, this is what's currently posted. And this is what was the proposed in the update. So I don't know if you just wanna go through them, like.
Yeah.
The Form A, that was fine, B, C, I, the first page was fine.
Okay.
What's there? So one thing I noticed on the second page, that chapter forty-three D, I don't know if you wanna eliminate that, because that's only one site and that's the hospital site.
Right, once it's.
So I don't know if you wanna just take that out.
Okay.
So there's that, and then the other change I found was changes. I have it was five hundred dollars plus two hundred dollars per lot, there wasn't, I, I don't know where that minor and major came from.
Yeah, and you know what, I, I was trying to go off of, we had a spreadsheet, like myself and Barbara had worked on way back. And I thought that I had gone off of the latest version of it. But it had been so long ago, and I know it went through so many changes and there were discussions during meetings, so that's fine, if that's what you had.
Yeah.
The five hundred plus two hundred per lot, so there was no minor or major anymore?
No, cuz I, so it has, I just have changes, I don't know if that was specific, and yeah, it just says changes. So I'm assuming like a change to a subdivision plan.
Okay.
I, I mean, I, I, that wasn't specified in the, in the minutes, I actually didn't go back and watch the meeting, so I'm not sure if that's what was discussed.
Okay.
And then the next one, down at retainer fee, I think that was supposed to be the surety. Cuz they, that was changed to, to be based on the actual cost of construction instead of per lineal foot. That was discussed, that was very outdated.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, I remember it being passed through, or.
Yeah, that's still on there, I feel like you could take that out too, because this one, this one says as billed by the engineer. So it's really not a fee then, if this is a fee schedule.
M, altogether, right?
Surety shall be based on the actual cost of construction. Yeah, I mean, that sounds more accurate.
Yeah.
Okay.
So take out L and M?
No, just N, right?
Well, that, I mean, that's your choice, if you wanna leave it in, it just, to me, it doesn't make sense because it's the fees and there's no fee associated with that.
Oh, I know, okay.
And then the retainer fee, I would change to surety.
Mm-hmm.
It's more clear.
Okay, so should we just maybe not call it a fee, but leave it in here so that they know to expect those items, or no? Is it redundant? It seem, I mean, cuz in other areas of these rules and regulations, it's gonna tell, you know, say that they're expected to have these reviews.
Yeah, because that's another thing, it says it like in three or four different places. Um, you know, the cost of review is in there, but then under consultant fees, it says the same thing again, so you might wanna actually put it more under that. It's not exactly a consultant fee, but, I mean, you could change it to something else, other fees.
Either just have a separate section of fees and then delineate the different ones.
Okay, so take out L, M, change N to surety.
Right.
And then call it on the next page, under consultant fees, consultant peer review.
Yeah.
And engineering fees.
Yep.
Yeah, that way everything's right there instead of all over the place, it's like, it's very confusing.
All right, great.
Okay, and then that wording is good, the fees for any professional consultants in case of. Should be borne by the applicant. So, yep, that sounds good.
So in the site plan, you're all set?
Yep.
Under the major, that up to three acres has been crossed off, it's.
On page three?
Yes, oh, so we, so how did we determine?
I think originally it was gonna be, well, I think it's the same thing, it's yes, per major, first acre, up to three acres, a thousand dollars, and then five hundred dollars per additional developed acre, but then over three acres, it's the same thing, five hundred dollars per acre. So I don't know if that was acre not developed, it doesn't specify, but that, that's not what was voted on at the end, it was just the minor and the major, excuse me, with the plus five hundred dollars per additional developed acre.
Okay. Oh, and then at that number one down there, cost of all professional consultants, same as number two, should we just take that out?
Yeah, cuz I have that, that's the same as number two consultant fees.
So take out, out. Well, so is there any reason, just before we go on to the next page, is there any reason to leave the chapter forty-three D in there until it gets developed, or no, should we?
Well, they're not filing under that, so that's the expedited part of permitting, they're not using that, and that's, it is what it's gonna be.
But what if they go through this whole permitting process and no, nothing gets built? That's the only.
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, you can leave it in there, but maybe look at it, you know, like you said, after it's built.
Right, so, and if we have a second, if we get the grant to get the rules and regulations fully revised, maybe we can look at it then.
Yeah.
So if they've already broken ground by then.
Oh, but a, actually, if you wanna go back to the first page, just, just a question, on the Form C.
Yeah.
So the one that's following the submission of a form. So the one that's following the submission of a Form B, it says at least thirty days prior to that of the Form C.
Mm-hmm.
So. I don't know, that was just a little bit unclear to me, does that mean that if they submit this within thirty days after the Form B, they get the discount, but if it's beyond that, they don't?
I think the way that it is, is so that they can't just give you at the same time, like it, it's supposed to be like a benefit for the board to review the plan, like the preliminary and then the definitive?
Okay.
I, I, from that's, that's how.
See what I'm saying though, it's like, I feel like it's confusing.
Following the submission of Form B, it is confusing, at least thirty days prior to that of Form C. After, right? Shouldn't it say, following submission of Form B, at least thirty days prior? Instead of saying to that of Form C again? Form C definitive plan following submission of a Form B at least thirty days prior. Does that make more sense? Or is it still unclear?
I, I still think it's unclear, but if I was reading this, I'm saying, what?
It has been.
Yeah.
Cause, so the way that we discussed it back then is we wanted to give them a slight discount. Instead of coming with a definitive plan right off the bat, if they come with a preliminary plan and give us a chance to review a preliminary plan prior to the definitive plan, we wanted to give them a, a bit of a discount off of that definitive plan if they file that preliminary first.
So, can we write it that way? That says discount offered if X plan is, uh, provided at least thirty days prior.
You use the word discount though. A lower rate or something because it's somehow.
So.
Rules and regulations and, I mean, total budget, I mean, a discount doesn't.
Yeah, yeah.
Seen a jive very well.
Yeah, I don't think discount is the right word, no.
I think maybe just even if it said when a Form B plan has been submitted at least thirty days prior.
Okay.
Okay.
Instead of the fall, I don't know, maybe that's just.
Exactly.
That sounds good.
Okay.
When it definitive.
Let's, okay, so we.
Thirty days prior. Okay, that sounds better.
The wording of that one.
Thank you.
Okay, on number H, we'll leave the chapter forty-three D in for now, but revisit.
Mm-hmm.
We're taking out L, M, rewording N.
Mm-hmm.
Taking out P-one, which is that consultant fee again. Um, okay, you said that we deleted Q. Okay.
Yeah, that, there was a vote to, uh, take that out. Now, right under there.
Yeah.
Fifteen hundred dollar filing fee for Form C, like, I don't understand why that's just like thrown in there over there.
See, cause there's an asterisk.
Um.
For, it was supposed to be.
Should we back up?
An exclamate, explanation of that asterix, I believe. So.
The cost of per, um.
So fifteen hundred if B is filed.
Yeah, but it's not, it's a thousand.
So I think it's. Oh, it is contradictory, huh? So that must have just been taken out then, and maybe we ended up with that bad wording.
I don't know, so I, you can delete that.
Okay, just take that out. And then number two, consultant fees is going to be peer review and engineering.
Yep.
As well, and then you have the question mark. Oh, for the printing of these different night or?
Yeah, so the town clerk offers the rules and regulations for five dollars, so.
Oh.
These fees, I don't believe wherever voted on, I didn't see them.
Okay.
The public hearing fee, like that's the advertising, they pay for that anyways with their application.
Mm-hmm.
And I believe the select board takes the application for street acceptance, so it's, it's not the purview of the board.
So all of that out?
Yep.
Is it? Okay.
Right.
Right, we don't really need to vote for this because we're just going to do it at a public hearing to review it all, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we'll get a clean copy. Yeah, cool. Very good, thank you Kathy.
And so what about, um, the process, we had, I know you've been out.
Yeah, I, that, I started with that, I thought that was the most important and now I'll try to work my way through.
Yeah, she's working on this anyway, stuff like.
Alright, but so that one's still on, we get the public hearing for that, that's good, so at least we can get the fees and the low hanging fruit, the easy things to revise done.
Good.
And then hopefully, um, yeah, who, if Christine is out, who's going to be checking to see?
Grants and.
Yeah, the one-stop grant. No?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Well, our agenda item number eight is our next meeting, August eighth, twenty-twenty-four, here at the Lakeville Police Station. Uh, do we have any other business?
Nope.
Nope.
Alright, would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn at seven fifty-nine PM, second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.